Before we begin tonight's meeting, we'd like to have a moment of silence. We'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the passing of Deb Deborah Anderson. Deborah was a longtime resident of Acton, and she was very involved in our town. She worked in the town clerk's office, and she also served with the Acton Ambulance Association for many years. Deb and her husband Bob also owned and operated Countryside Corner store on Route 109 for many years. In addition, Deb's daughter is our full-time paramedic, and her husband is our constable. Our thoughts and our prayers go out to Bob, Sharon, and Michelle as they go through this very difficult time. So we'd like to have a moment of silence. Thank you. Do you have anything you want to say?
Nope.
Okay. Dave?
Well, then Deb was great. You know, she was always, I think she was, she worked in the office for a while, didn't she?
Yeah.
Yeah. I was an assistant town clerk, I believe, for quite a while. And she did a lot for the town of Acton. She'll be missed.
Yeah. She was a treasurer of the Acton Ambulance Association when I was fire chief. Good to work with. Yep, she will be missed.
She definitely will be missed.
Yep.
Thoughts and prayers to her family. All right. Well, I'd say let's call the meeting to order, and let's pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right. First is the town administrator's weekly update.
Yes, just a few things for you tonight. So I'm going to start by reminding everybody that Monday is Labor Day. So the transfer station is being advertised that's closed. Town Hall, obviously, is, Town Hall Monday staff won't be in. Payroll deadline will get moved to Tuesday, so we won't need a signature until Wednesday for next week. But we are closed on Monday. Next, just to let you know that the secretary at the elementary school and the superintendent did send out one of those first alerts regarding the rec for us to all of the calls on the list, so hopefully that will help maybe get some people interested in it. One of the committees that was left on, left off on the liaison list was the Mary Grant. So I'm looking for somebody to possibly step into that. I know that Kim is the chair, so she's got a full plate dealing with the agenda and everything going on. David's got the roads and schools, which kind of weighs out-
What are you trying to tell me?
Which kind of weighs out conservation and it doesn't, I mean, it's certainly your call, but I need a liaison to that committee.
I'll, I'll do it if you want. I don't care.
Okay. All right. Town report update, just wanted to let you know and thank everybody that worked so hard to get their September 1st deadlines in. Most everybody has them in. We have, Cheryl and I sat down with the, went through the list today. Really just most of our politicians in the beginning are missing, a couple of Shapley, Youth Corps, Conservation, just Saco River, a couple of minor ones, a couple in-house, but I've been promised to have them by the end of the week, so I won't public bash them quite yet. So we are going to go to print soon. Soon, soon. Absentee ballots, we have been inundated with them. We probably have over 300 people already waiting for absentee ballots that have filled out applications. The law says 30 to 45 days, so certainly as soon as we get them, we will let you know. I did send out an email per the treasurer's request and your follow-up from last week that I invited the road commissioner and the treasurer to next Wednesday's meeting to talk about the couple of small issues that they've run into with payroll. So reminder that the 16th of September, the gentleman from the Wakefield Board of Selectmen wants to come talk to you about that bridge down there, so he's on the agenda. Speaking of bridges and guardrails, District 1 Road Commissioner did get me the pictures from the accident that you had referenced, Mr. Winchell. And I reached out to the Sheriff's Department that gave me a copy of the police report, so we've gathered all that together along with the bill and are working with the driver's insurance to try to get that covered. Fire chief was in today, updated me on a few things. One of the things that we talked about is the old tanker that he has that's going out of service on October 1st. We kind of reviewed the procedure and policy of how he would sell that. He did send me over the spec list, and we will work on putting something together when it gets closer to October 1st so that we can, we can advertise it. But he says it's going out of service. He's going to present to you what his backup plan is because, obviously, until the new purchase comes in, that one can't be used. Ed, hoping that you'd have five minutes after the meeting to adjust our clocks and lights like you always do. It's been dark the last few times, so we would appreciate that.
Yep.
So I think I've figured out what's going on with the generator. Just impressed myself with the knowledge I'm learning about this thing, we'll call it. So what, what we figured out has happened is that whenever the power goes out and the generator has to kick on, then the next Wednesday, it doesn't, it won't do its run. Do you know what I mean? So if the power doesn't go off Wednesday to Wednesday, it picks up the run Wednesday at 10 o'clock, right Cheryl? It runs for 10 or 15 minutes and all is well, but if the power goes out during that week for whatever reason, and it has to jump on, it doesn't do the test the next Wednesday.
Does it have to be reset?
Well, the electrician came out today, and he looked at it because Cheryl is tasked now with every Wednesday at 10 o'clock going out and seeing if it, if it goes off. Today it didn't. When the electrician came out, the timer shows September 2nd at 10 o'clock, like it ran. You know, we went through some tests, and it seems to be functioning well, but the problem we got into this last time with the battery was that it wasn't testing like it was supposed to, so we're going to let it run one more week, try a couple other things, and then we'll involve the company if we have to. Last thing I wanted to mention was the policies. We were making great strides with the policies. Before COVID hit, we were really pretty much doing one a week, and my goal is really to get them for you to review every, you know, every July and August, to be done by August, go through them all and review them. So just a fair warning that next week I'm going to start putting them back on the agenda so that we can get caught up with them and start going through them as you wish. Does that have to end?
Next is our warrant and bills. I think all of us already signed.
I've been in, yep.
Yep. So that's done. We need approval of the agenda.
Make a motion, will you approve the agenda?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor? All opposed? All right. Minutes of the last meeting.
So we have a few. Let me start with the 19th, which was the one that, that Mr. Winchell was at his training class, so we've been looking for Kim and Ed to approve those if they're acceptable. The 24th was the executive session, and the road commissioner posting, all three of you were at. And then the 26th would have been last week that-
I wasn't at.
Ms. Kimberly was absent from.
Okay.
We can make a motion to accept the minutes of August 19th and the 24th.
You're making that, or you need a motion?
I guess I need a motion.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion when we approve the 19th, 24th, and 26th.
And I'll second that.
Cover them all.
What day was, what was the meeting I missed?
You missed the 19th.
19th, okay.
I'll second it because I was at those two.
Okay.
You guys will have to do the other one.
So we got a motion made and seconded for just the 19th and 24th?
Yes.
Okay. I'll amend my motion. Yep.
Actually, I hate to do, I hate to do this to you, Ed, but we'll do the 19th first because only two of you were there.
Sure.
Right.
So motion made by Ed.
Yep. Make a motion for the 19th.
All right, all in favor? And abstained is-
We're in favor, right? Okay.
Abstained is David. All right, and then the 24th, all three of you were at.
Yep.
Make a motion to approve the 24th.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Perfect. And then the 26th, Kim was absent from.
I'll make a motion, we approve the agenda for the 26th.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Abstained. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, minutes done. How about department heads?
District 1 Road Commissioner reached out in the conversations today. He wanted to update the board on a few items.
Will Langley, District 1 Road Commissioner. Last time we talked, you guys approved my scope of work for the H Road, and we started up there last week. Last Tuesday, we got our first cross culvert all in, and Thursday, that last week, we got the second one in. We started ditching last Wednesday, and this week, we've been ditching this week, and tomorrow we should be just about all set for paving, and the gentleman from Pike's going to come out at the end of the week, and hopefully he's going to have a date for me that they're going to be here, and we're going to go over the road one more time and should be ready to go. And so far, we've sold 65 loads of ditches off that road so far, so. And while I'm up here, one other thing, just because it says in our road commissioner on the inside, where are we standing with the RSMS? Because, I mean, I have all the information for up there, and, I mean, these are going on the computer, I just wondered. I have it all on paper. I just have to put it in there, but-
Yep. So it's actually interesting that you ask that because I intended on showing these to the board, and I didn't. So I told you guys that I reached out to, is it Peter?
Peter Coughlin.
Okay, hold on. So I reached out to Peter, I've sent him two emails, and I have left a voicemail. The last time, let me just find it. The last time that I got an email, here we go, came from Peter and Tammy. Let me see. Peter and Tammy had sent the email, Peter Coughlin and Tammy Chamberlain, sent an email about the road class that they were interested in. And I thought, well, this is great because, yeah, I'm going to reply to that, and maybe they'll reply to me. So that was on the 25th, when the road committee chair reached out to me with numbers, I replied, told them our numbers, immediately reached out to Tammy again saying, hey, does Peter have time to talk about RSMS? No response. I sent, that was a week ago, I sent another one again today. So I'm not sure why they're not responding, but I've certainly got a long paper trail of requests into them, so.
All right, I'll just keep writing everything down and-
Yep, please do.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Will.
Thank you.
Maybe if I don't hear anything by the end of the week, David as the liaison, you can try to reach out to them because I'm not sure why anyone's getting back to me.
Yeah, it would be nice to try to get started and-
Call and left emails, that's all I can do.
Jerry Douglas used to be the guy that took care of that. He now works for Allstate, so.
Right.
Right.
When we reached out to the, the contact me on the RSMS website, remember we got the email back saying that Peter Coughlin was now overseeing it, so.
Right. All righty. Old business. Article 43 applications.
All right, so the board has three in front of them.
Which one do we want to start with?
I would start with number one. So there were two from Langley Shore Drive.
Oh, I got it.
One was numbered number one, and one was numbered number two, based on one being what we're calling a 1920 request and one being a 2021 request. I'm not sure if you want to take her recommendations so that she can sit down before we go through these, I'm assuming that's why she's there.
Sure.
Leslie Berlin, Road Committee Chair. Just, just a small correction on the agenda. The Lakeside Drive is actually 1920 because that was one of the old ones.
Thank you for pointing that out. This is Berlin.
The road committee met last, last night and voted to approve all three of them for reimbursement for the amount that they asked for. So the, the two old ones, we said yes, and then the new one, we said yes also. So if there's any questions on, on any of them, just let me know.
All right, so which one does the board want to start with? Because as I understand it, with from having conversations with David, we need to kind of go through these. Well, actually, what, what happened at the road, you were there? What happened at the road committee meeting? They went through and made sure each thing was attached as it says and did all their homework?
Well, they made recommendations. There wasn't a whole lot of going through. I was under the assumption that they must have gone through them by themselves because-
Didn't happen at the meeting?
No, not at the meeting, so I've been going through it myself, trying to make sure, but I think probably tonight we really have to go through it and make sure we cross all our t's and dot our i's.
We could ask Leslie, too.
David was at the meeting, he said they didn't do it there, so.
Right, I was just going to ask her how they were, you know, how they were doing it, that's all. I just had a question.
There was, there was, one of the members, the people that have put in for it, got up and explained the new one, but that's about the extent of it.
Does everybody get these like ahead of your meeting and go through them and stuff?
We did, when Jennifer mailed, emailed them to you, she emailed them to all of the committee members, and she also sent hard copies to the people, not on email.
Okay.
So everybody had all of the documentation prior to.
Okay.
And actually, one of the members had a question regarding one of the old ones, so it had been, it had been reviewed.
Okay. All right. I'm just wondering how you did it. All right, thank you.
Just so the board knows, on page two of all three of them, they would be considered incomplete because the, well, there's no, well, I mean, the approved denied, but the amount, there's no amount in there, and I know that was one of the things that David pointed out, is that you need to add a line to the front page or something. There's nothing that says we are requesting, you know, $3,000. If there's one invoice attached for $1,200, then we can assume $1,200 is what they asked for. If their invoices are over $3,000, because I think the one that has Mr. Mooney's work is like $7,000, we can assume they want $3,000, but we really should put it clear somewhere where the road association is putting a number in of what they're actually asking for.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
We did talk last night at the meeting about the way that things were laid out, and to make sure that when these applications come in and the estimate comes in, especially if you have like a three-phase project, that what you might want to do, these associations might want to do is might want to separate them and kind of get an idea of, okay, how much, you know, say, say you're asking for $3,000, and you're asking for $6,000 for the project, $6,000 for the project, you're asking $3,000 from us to highlight it out so we know that $3,000 is going towards that project. That way, we don't have to worry about the next year when they come in and ask for another amount of money, that it's not going towards the same project, or, or whatever. So and I'm doubling up on it. One thing I was going through today, and I couldn't find an exact amount, and we really, we really have to have, okay, like, I think one of these, and here's $1,260. Are we covering the whole thing, or are they, you know, because we've had other roads only come in and ask for $1,000, so we don't want to be, we've got to be a little bit more specific on that, so I think on our part of it, we have to add that line in there. How about you asking for?
Right.
You asking for the full $3,000, or you only asking for, you know, part of it, or what do you, so that we can document it.
All right, so is it our goal to go through these? I mean, you've got seven of them, that each one of them say attached, so that's, you know, really what the auditor was looking for, is making sure that document is attached? Or have you guys already had a chance to do that, or?
That's the, which, which one are you talking about?
So I'm looking at Langley Shore, what I'm calling number one, there's a one in the upper right corner.
On Lakeside.
This is, this is what we're calling the 1920 from Langley Shore.
All right.
So attaching proof of the proper formation, I mean, has somebody gone through and checked all these? All right, so the formation, articles of incorporation is that one, right?
I see that.
Attach proof that private road is within the watershed of Great Pond supporting this. Call if one of you see it.
Say that again?
The, number three, attach proof that the private road is within the great watershed. The Sonic filing is all part of that one, the bylaws. It's going to be asked about.
Bylaws.
Oh, right there.
There we go. We got it, too.
I'm guessing that it, the one, 2015 RRO2 Great Lake watershed program.
Yep, we got that.
That's also the next one for Langley Shores, too.
Okay. Attach proof that the road satisfies one of the following criteria, the Great Pond is listed on the DEP, which isn't that what that is? The same thing? Main DEP NPS priority watershed.
Say that again, Jen.
This main department of, main DEP NPS priority watershed list. That would be the Great Pond is listed on the watershed, right?
Yep.
Okay. And the Great Pond is identified as having threats to the water quality and completed watershed protocol.
And so this is candidate site list for road BMTs.
All right, so this is what, this one, looks like this, looks good.
Yep.
Chart says the Great Lake Road erosion sites identified in the watershed survey. So that's C.
That's C, right?
Yep. And four said that they only had to attach proof of one, so you've got two there.
We've got plenty, yep.
Five, attach proof demonstrating the private road is contributing to the degradation of water quality. I'm not sure whether it's NA, you guys might know that better than I.
Not any.
Do you know why that's non-applicable, David?
Well, at the time, we're going, we're going by the old.
So that was one of the old questions?
Right.
Yeah, so.
Attached documentation identifying the work. Okay. So from the auditor's stance, all the paperwork is there for you to make your decision.
Yep.
And this one, where are we at with numbers?
I got, I got an amount here of $1,202.50.
$1,202.50, yep. That must be what they're asking for.
And I couldn't find any other bill.
Oh, yeah, because I paid out the $1,202.50. Did you have a copy of the check?
Yep, I see the copy of the check right here. Everything works in order with this one.
So we're going to, can we make motions and deal with them as we go along?
Can we make a motion to accept?
That's what you want to do.
We'll make a motion, we accept the application for Langley Shores for 2020 for an amount of $1,202.50.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor? All opposed?
Okay, one down. All right, so let's do the, Lakeside is next because that's a 1920.
Yep.
Which one?
Lakeside. It's a 1920, so that's going to be based on the same idea.
Okay.
All right. So incorporated statutory, they're saying statutory. So for statutory, so we're looking at 2B, for statutory associations attached, a copy of the notarized call meeting. Somewhere in this inbox, there's a email, something about Bill Hill. You can find it, or you can press it on the phone.
Bylaws.
Yeah, forward it to yourself so that you can print it on.
See it in here for some reason.
See if you can find it first and confirm it's the right one. I feel like it was a day or two ago. Sorry. So you found the, is it notarized? Notarized, yep.
I got it from the, got it from the bylaws. I've got the tax information.
Did you, so 2B, you're good on? You're good on 2B?
Yep.
So attach proof that the private road is within the Great Pond.
Yep, there you go.
Got that, Threat and Leaks Priority List?
Yep.
That patent on the road is on there?
Got that.
Great Pond, got it? Attach proof that the private road association satisfies one of the following Great Pond is listed on the, is that kind of the same thing? Is 3 and 4A the same thing?
Just about.
I mean, 3, you're attaching proof that the private road is within the watershed, and then 4A, you're attaching lists that, you know, that it's out West, which that document kind of does the same thing, right?
Yep. And then, what is it? Six?
Five.
Five and six, would those be NA? Because this is number one.
Yep, yep, yep.
Okay.
And then, either- Is there a number in here somewhere?
Yep. $2,960.
Is there a copy of the check?
There is not a copy of the check, but there's a bill that says paid.
I'm not seeing it, but it's got to be in there somewhere. Can you give me the, oh, there it is, right there. $29.60?
$29.60.
Yep. All right. I'm sorry, board, here, I've made just a second call. I wasn't sure you were coming because nobody replied to the email, so I didn't have that ready, but just going to print it off for you real quick.
You should go to make a motion, everything's here, right?
Yep.
All right, so I don't know if one of you wants to make a motion with the number.
I'll make a motion, we accept the application for Langley Shores for 2021, no, 2020 still.
That's 1920, yep.
Yeah. For the amount of $2,960.
Did you say Langley?
Sign.
Or is this Lakeside Drive?
Oh, I grabbed, I went on the left right here.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we do the right one.
Yeah. Lakeside Drive Association for the amount of $29.60.
I'll second it.
All right, so it's been moved and seconded. All in favor? All opposed? All right. One more down. $29.60.
So. Now that we have number two, attach proof, we know that we have proof that the road is within the Great Water, so I'm assuming they made the 10 copies. 4A, the Great Pond is listed. List is in there. Great Pond is identified as having threats. All right, so we're really looking at five and six, right, on this one?
Looking at five and six, you said?
Yeah, so there's a, I think if you jump to, there's a DEP letter towards the end.
Yep.
This would be attach a statement demonstrating the private road is contributing to the degradation of water quality. What it says, the DEP met with her. Okay. Says that they talked about the excessive runoff and what they recommend for ditching. Second site they looked at was regarding the double culvert. Turn crossing on the end, I don't think is relevant, but let me decide if that letter is acceptable for you for number five?
I would think so, yeah. What do you two think?
I mean, it gives a description of what they're going to do. Sorry about that.
Say that again.
Gives a good, pretty good description of what they're going to do and coming from the DEP.
Right.
So, I mean, that's pretty much what we were aiming for.
Yeah.
So.
All right, so that's number five, Jen?
Yes, that's five. So number six, attach documentation identifying the specific work needed to remedy the, which is kind of in that same letter, so because it says, I recommend installing the sediment basin at the inlet, the culvert. She kind of recognizes the problem and makes a recommendation at the same time, so it's a matter of the proposed plan determining if it covers the areas that DEP recommended.
So they've got a quote listing out some of the work, materials for part one, part two, part three. I think in the future, I think it would be probably to everybody's best interest to do it as one project, if possible. That way, there we don't get confused with so many projects at one time. That's just a suggestion. That's just a suggestion. But it looks good to me.
All right. What's the total dollar amount they're looking for?
What are we asking for, is it the whole?
That's one of the areas that we need to update the application, because I guess I can understand how they might on page two assume that that's for us to fill out and need to make a decision.
Can we ask Steve to come up and see if he had an intention of how much they were asking for?
Steve D'Arnia in President Langley Shores Association, and I'm half deaf, so I didn't quite hear you, David. I'm up here, but I don't know why.
What it is, is there's nothing on the, what you submitted of exactly how much you want.
Are you looking for the full three thousand?
Yes, we're looking for the full three thousand, yes.
Based on the?
Based on the total cost of it.
Okay. There's nothing here saying exactly what you want, and so we just.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, it should have been on there.
That's part on our end, we're going to have to put a line in, we just wanted to ask.
As we're going through this, we're going to get all the kinks and stuff out of it, and this is one that we noticed, I noticed today when I was going through it again.
We need another line.
We're going to have to put another line in, I know you're going to want that. So, just so that we know when we're going through this process, we know exactly what the numbers that you're asking for.
Yes.
So nobody gets shortchanged or overpaid or whatever, so.
Right.
All right.
Is there anything else you need me for?
I think that is it, looks like you've got everything here, thank you. Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve three thousand dollars to Langley Shores Association for this two thousand twenty season.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor? All opposed?
The only thing I want to add to the board is on the front page, it says the applications must be, have a completed W nine attached.
It is acceptable.
I saw it in one, you saw one of them?
I did see one.
Didn't see the other one. Which one did you see the one on?
I feel like it was the first one we did.
It must have been the first.
So we can use that for both of them, so I'll double check with Lakeside. Did you see one on Lakeside? Because our treasurer will not pay him out without.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it was Lakeside.
Yeah, it says right there, the funds won't be released until they get it.
Right, but I just don't want to be chasing anybody down, I thought I saw Joe. Everybody looks the same without masks on, nope. So I'll send an email, did you say Langley Shores was in there?
Just looking real quick. I know I looked at one. I'm pretty sure it was the first one, but.
No, I just want to be a hundred percent.
I thought I did see one.
Yeah, it was, it was, it's Lakeside Drive.
Oh, Lakeside has it.
Yeah, Lakeside has it.
You're talking about Langley Shores? Is that what you're talking about?
Well, in the Lakeside Drive, they've got their tax information.
Have you seen it? They have it. W nine, that one. All right, so let's pull that out and put that post up. Steve, do you know if you submitted yours, save me some time flipping through this? Do you know if there's a W nine in here? You think there's one in here? If I keep digging? All right, so it needs to be attached, Steve, so we'll need you to bring one in for us.
That's it, just. Yep, no, I don't see it with those.
Do agree, I mean, they can bring one in each time, we shouldn't have to go fine, you're okay with that?
Thank you.
All right, so that's done.
All right, so. Get all those. So, we're on Old Business B, tanker truck bid.
So I spoke to the fire chief and he is still working out companies, Ed, he did make mention that you guys are kind of playing phone tag. He wanted to run a couple things by you.
Yeah, I'll try to get them, hold them tomorrow.
But I think that possibly by, by next week, he might have a spreadsheet to present to you.
C, RFP loan?
So that's still pending, I gave it to you to review last week, but until we get an exact number for the tanker truck, it's really irrelevant at this point.
All right, new business. Boy Scouts request.
I left beside all of you an email that we received from the Acton Chapley Boy Scouts. They are looking to leave a bottle box somewhere on the property. They would take full responsibility for cleaning it, for it being maintained, but with COVID, they can't do a lot of fundraising and they've still got some camps and stuff that they want to make sure the kids get to. There are Acton kids in this group as well as the girls that they oversee. So Chapley did give approval last night for one to be in the town hall parking lot and hoping Acton will do the same.
What do you two think?
They'll take full responsibility if it gets dirty. Put a little side note in it that Cheryl's husband, Dan, is actually one of the leaders, so. She tends that box half as much as she tends my office, you'll have no worries.
I think that's a good idea.
It helps the kids.
We can send down by the old fire station down in the corner.
I missed myself up there.
That'd be a good idea.
Side of it, I think it'd be an issue.
Sounds good to me.
All right.
You guys are all set with that?
Yeah, all set with that, yes. Would they want one here and not the fire station?
I think one would probably be good, huh?
One's good.
Yeah, because if you put one right here on the corner right here, it wouldn't make any sense to have one over there.
Yeah.
I don't think we want cars coming in and out of their parking lot randomly.
That's true, yeah, I didn't think of that.
Yeah.
Let's see here, B, appointments. One second.
So you have one member, one person that's interested in being on the planning board, he's interested in being the alternate position, I did run it by code enforcement and letting him know today that he was interested. He's happy to have the seat filled, he recommended a two-year appointment. So that we could stagger them, the next one we'll get a one-year.
All right. So this will be their certificate of appointment title thirty A MRSA two six oh two. Selectman's Office Municipality of Acton, Maine, to James Driscoll. The selectmen of the municipality of Acton do in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the state of Maine hereby appoint you as alternative planning board member within and for the municipality of Acton until six thirty two thousand and twenty-two. Given under our hand the second day of September two thousand and twenty.
Make a motion, we appoint James Driscoll to the planning board as an alternate member?
I'll second that.
And is this the only?
So far, we still have one left, Ed did make mention that someone else may be interested, Ed has somebody that may be interested, so just a matter of who comes forward first and we'll present it to you when they do.
Okay. Well, it's been moved and seconded, so all in favor? All opposed? All right, well, welcome. You need us to sign?
Yes.
Feel like I'm sitting in a box.
So the next appointments that you have, and I apologize, I'm missing one, I must have lost on my desk, but there is one more name. The rec committee, so I talked to a couple of members that were on it, that were still kind of on the fence based on some things going on in their lives. But Lori Clark did make mention to me that she was interested in being reappointed. Just her, her husband is going to, he's going to hold back for now, so her appointment is not there, but I can grab it as soon as the meeting adjourns.
Okay.
Jenny Norwald is one on there, she was on the committee as well, and she's interested in being reappointed. And then the other two people are Dan Norwald, which is actually her sister or her brother. And the other person, before you said a name out loud, is a non-resident of Acton, so I just want to put this out there so that you can decide. She has a lot of family in Acton, a lot of ties, she has no kids, she's got nieces and nephews that are little and go through the system, and she really would like to be involved somewhere. I did go back to the original ordinance book and when the conservation and the rec committee were one. There's nothing in there that indicates they have to be a town resident, certainly if this was the planning board, we would think differently. You've got Dick Neal on the Mary Grant as a non-resident that you've allowed. Certainly your choice, but she is a non-resident.
What do you think?
I don't see an issue with that, Boyd.
Where is she from?
Very similar to Mary Grant.
You feel?
Okay.
But her whole family is in Acton.
Yep. Okay.
I don't see an issue with that.
No.
I mean, as long as there's no one, that's the same we can.
I mean, if we had people knocking down the doors and wanted to, you know, I definitely would put the non-resident last, but at this point, you're trying to fill it, they'd like to do a couple of events, even if they're not, because obviously, we're not going to do soccer, I don't know what it's going to happen with basketball, but just to have a day event to get the kids out, down at the field doing something. You know, an obstacle course day or something, so there. This group is, seems to be excited about doing something, so I think it should be a good asset.
When I do these, am I calling Lori's name too?
Yes, please.
Okay, so Lori, Dan, Daniel, and Lauren. Just the three of them then, right?
No, the four of them.
Who's the fourth one?
Well, you have three in your hand.
I have two in my hand.
You had three.
I had three.
David's holding out on you.
Okay, now I got three.
You had three.
I was going to say, huh? No, okay.
One field including.
All right, so let's see here, we'll do this. Certificate of Appointment Title thirty A MRSA two six zero two, Selectman's Office Municipality of Acton, Maine. The selectmen of the municipality of Acton do in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the state of Maine hereby appoint you as recreational committee members within and for the municipality of Acton until six thirty two thousand and twenty-one. Given under our hand the second day of September two thousand and twenty. And we have Jenny Norwald, Daniel Norwald, Lauren Stevenson, and Lori Clark. Now I need a motion.
I make a motion, we appoint, is it Jenny Norwell? What was the other name, Dan? Daniel Norwell, Lauren Stevenson, and Lori Clark to the rec committee.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor? All opposed? All right, thank you. Joining our rec committee.
How many spots is left on the committee as of right now?
I'm sorry?
How many spots are left on the committee to be filled?
Well, that was four, rec was seven, I believe.
That's four, then you got Lori, that makes five, right?
Lori was four.
Lori is four. And maybe with the school, you know, sending it out to the people at the school.
Right. And I think there was, we had someone else, Ed, that you and I had talked about, a prior member that might be interested in being back on it.
Right.
So. I do have another item under new business, I'm trying to, if it's okay, Madam Chair.
That was what, three? Yeah, she has a fourth, I'll back, okay.
I'll grab it afterwards.
Yep.
Thank you. Yes, it's okay?
Yeah.
Carl, want to come up?
So Carl and I and Sherry Bernal have emailed back and forth a little bit in regards to a letter of support that Green Rivers was looking for in regards to Hanson Pond.
Yes.
So Paul, I'm going to tell you a little bit about that. These are the email correspondence. Carl, I wasn't sure, as I was kind of saying, I wasn't sure that you were coming, so I didn't prepare the letter because nobody replied to the last one saying to confirm. But if the board supports it, certainly we can type up the attachment and I want to talk a little bit about it.
Yeah, this is some restoration work that we're doing out on the Hanson Pond property. There's a logging road that was probably put in many, many years ago. Was widened out probably when they did the harvest three years ago. And there's two culverts on it that connect wetlands, and the restoration project is to take the culverts out, restore the flow between the wetlands. And the Army Corps gets the application, they like to see that the town doesn't see any issues with it and supports the project.
Are you working with DEP at all with that?
Working with who?
Are you working with DEP with that at all, or?
DEP is involved too, yes.
Okay, good. As long as they're involved, I'm also.
Yep, they didn't look for a letter of support, but the Army Corps did.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing, if they're all set with it, then I'm not going to stand in the way of it.
No, it's just that they require, you know, they like to see a letter of support with it.
Yes, we can do that.
Sounds good to me.
Can you go in there now?
Are we going to start now?
Well, what I meant was, is can people go in there yet now, or is it? I know you're just kind of starting doing stuff, but are people walking up in there?
Well, we're just actually getting the permits together, there's a few. We are going to put a new trail in there, which will, there is a snowmobile trail that runs through there, and it'll also be a new snowmobile trail and walking trail that'll get out to the pond. And we're, the plan is to do it this fall. The fall's getting here pretty quickly.
It is, it's coming quick, so we'll get you that letter.
Yeah, so we hope to, we're hoping that it's ready, you know, this fall.
That'll be nice. Well, thank you.
Okay.
So we'll prepare that and I'll let you know when it's ready to be picked up.
Anything else?
I think probably we ought to add to the new business there, I got, we got an email about the iron tails issue. Did you guys read that email?
I didn't see it.
Yeah.
Actually, it didn't go to you, I meant to ask you to forward it to.
Right, and for full transparency, there are actually two, but they're unrelated, and I did speak to code enforcement today, and I was letting him get a chance to handle it and meet with some people before, you know, a business got brought to the limelight, something that may or may not be accurate, I don't have all the facts, I mean, we have.
I just brought it up for the simple reason, I got the email, I wanted to make sure, because I had talked to these people a while back, explained to them what I would do. Sheriff says, call us, so I want to make sure that they know that we are looking into it, we're making sure that we're doing something.
So I did reply to both of the emails, one of them that came in is regarding really what the planning board is going to do, and there was conversation that, you know, that code enforcement officer is giving a little bit of leeway to outside music based on COVID, because he's not looking to see these small businesses shut down. You know, there's talk about the decimeter system and how that's working, he wants a complaint in writing, so there's a complaint form, so we're working on that process. The other one that came in was, had nothing to do with music or the planning board or the town, it was individual reference that people without masks and maybe down there. And I know that the health inspector's been involved, and there's a little more to it, and it's, you know, he's, the property owner is taking some measurements, has met with health officers as well, and putting a couple of porta potties out, but they've got it sectioned off, and they're meeting a lot of the requirements, so. I don't want to blow it up into something that it's not until.
No, but I just want to make sure we trust.
Yeah, no, I replied to both of the emails.
They'll be watching and make sure it's not pushing the road.
Can you send them to me too?
Yeah, I will send them all to you.
Thanks.
I figured I'd go through Ken first to see, gather all the information and then bring it to you. One of them just came in today, so.
All right. Anything else? How about public comment, anybody?
First thing I have is a procedural question. I believe the auditor wanted, it was something about wanting to know who approved these applications for Article forty-three. And what was done tonight, two of them, the applications were accepted, and one of them, they were approved, and the meaning is really two different things. So I don't know if, I don't think accepting them.
so I don't know if, I don't think accepting them is, is, well, I know it's not the same as approving them. And I think that's what the auditor was looking for, if I, if memory serves me right.
On the application, it does say approve or deny.
So we should approve.
No, I appreciate that.
Yeah, you're right. It should be, except, accepting them could be, they've given them to us. Approving them means, yeah, no, that's, that's true.
You guys already accepted them when you, before you get into the committee.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
It's just a procedural issue. The other thing is, um, now that you've opened the, the town back up to meetings, um, it, what's the best management practices for cleaning the town hall? Uh, I know the CDC set down guideline, the guidelines. I had a long talk a while ago with John Ross, uh, and people have to have proper training to clean things appropriately, uh, and the frequency of the cleaning. Uh, some people around the community has had concerns about, um, the proper sanitation and stuff. So is, can anybody answer that?
So I, I mean, I can, I can answer it. So, um, the, so for example, you know, we have a cleaning service that comes in once a week, but when there is a meeting that goes on, um, we did, I came in first thing this morning. I was actually on the phone with you, David, um, when I was lysol-ing down every, you know, every table, every chair, anything that possibly could have been touched. We do that every day when the office closes anyways. Lysol is considered to be one of the, one of the approved items. Um, as Mrs. Berlin will tell you that I also sent her an email in advance telling her that I left wipers out for, I left lysol out for. So we try to provide everything to make people feel comfortable. So if you're coming to a meeting, you're welcome to use those things prior to sitting down. But we are cleaning and disinfecting in between, um, meetings as well, the best that we can.
I mean, um, this is extenuating circumstances and, and, and people come into the town hall constantly. Uh, so having a cleaning service that, uh, does things once a week or whatever doesn't really satisfy the needs of the people of the town. And, uh, it surely doesn't meet the CDC requirements for cleaning.
What would your recommendation?
Not, if you, example would be, uh, those things you're using right now, have those been sanitized?
Yes, they have.
They've been all sanitized before the meeting?
Did it myself this morning.
The, the cloths?
The cloths are sanitized by the cable. Um, he takes them out. These are, these are. That's what I'm understanding, that these are washed by the cable director.
All right, I, I just, there are people that act, that are concerned that.
What are you suggesting we do? I mean, I mean you.
That they're not being washed because I was something.
Is that the weekend?
No, no, I'm not.
There is.
I'm not saying they're not washed. Okay, how many times a, a day is the bathroom cleaned?
Right. It's not during the day.
Okay.
So we've put.
Is it done every day?
No, no.
This is, this is, this is what I'm saying is my concern, that this is no different than any other public building. Uh, when you have people coming in it is certain stipulations. I mean, you guys have been very clear for the last six months about stuffing the governor and the CDC, which I appreciate. Uh, but now we're moving forward. There's certain guidelines that need to be followed to keep it safe for everybody that comes into the town hall. And bottom line is if it costs more money, it costs more money. Uh, but it's up to the selectmen to make sure that everything is safe, uh, for everybody. Uh, these cloth chairs, uh, how are those kept germ-free, virus-free?
They're sprayed with lysol and wiped down with the bleach slips. So let me, let's go back from it. So he, he certainly already comes in the bathroom. Probably have to figure something out. It's, will drain the building maintenance account, but he's, he's got a point. That should be washed every day. Um, the two areas that we have the public coming into as far as the clerk's office or code enforcement, we've done it in a case so that it forces one person in and out, so that we're not having more than one, one person in. So the idea between every customer, I mean, we're certainly taking the protocols and I trust they are downstairs as well, is that when one customer leaves, the area's wiped down, it's bleached down, the, the pen is wiped, we're washing the railing down. I mean, we're doing everything that, that we can. Um, the bathroom would be a, a concern.
Does anybody come in here during the day, like between meetings?
They're told to exit that way, but I, if it's not raining, we pop that door open so that when you leave, you go out that door, you don't even have to touch the handle. I mean, I've got, do both doors propped open, you know?
That's only gonna last a little bit while longer.
Well, no, I hear you and I'm, and I appreciate it because I don't wanna get sick any more than anybody else and we're the ones at the front line.
But we are a senior community and there's a lot of people that this affects. And that's, that's been a very big concern for at least six months.
And I would encourage those people that have concerns to reach out to, to the board directly as well. And myself, I will tell you that I've had probably three people in, in six months that have said, Jen, can you come out to the car? I'm not comfortable coming in. And certainly we have done that. So it's important, Dennis, as I trust you understand with your years as a selectman, that they reach out to the board of selectmen with its concern so that we can address them.
Well, as a senior citizen, I am reaching out to the selectmen and asking you to change your cleaning protocol and to make it safe for people like myself.
Do you think we should, do you think we should hire somebody in like that?
Whatever you need to do. I mean, the whole country has to.
Right.
Uh, down to the school, they've changed responsibilities to the people that work at the school.
And we've changed a lot of things as well. Probably the one missing piece that's cleaned in between people, but it's a good point.
As, as he's, you know, we've.
I'm not giving people a hard time. It's just something that people around the community have talked about.
Well, it's also, um, you know, what he's saying, okay, we're letting people in now to have functions too, right?
Yep.
Really need somebody to come in, like a cleaner to come in and clean after them and not leave it up to them to clean it.
What we've told the people that have rented is that, you know, it's obviously their responsibility. I mean, they're not certified cleaners to, to no part, but, you know, they're required when they're done to, you know, wipe everything down, sanitize. I mean, the town's even providing, providing everything, you know, to, to wash the area down.
But would it be better for us to just have somebody do it because it's their job?
Yeah, but you know, it's not sure that the taxpayers should be paying for if a private event is used in the hall.
I know.
Problem is, the whole deal is, is no way, unless we have somebody standing at that bathroom door all day long when, you know, like at the fair, the guy stands the door and you leave and he goes and cleans the toilet. Because when the first person walks in that has it, infects it, don't matter if it was cleaned the night before, everybody that walks through is gonna get it. Um, the only way you're gonna solve that problem is doing what a lot of stores are doing. You're not allowed to use their bathroom. Okay? Um, having functions in this town hall.
Yeah.
If we have somebody come in here and they say, I'm gonna clean it, well, some people think clean is different than other people.
Well, that's what I'm saying. That's why if we had one person.
This opens up a can of worms and this isn't a possible task. This is the first that I've heard that anybody's complained about it. We have wipes, we, this and that. We make people wear masks. I, I think we're doing just as much as Walmart and anybody else is doing. Um, but I honestly believe that if, if somebody believes this place is gonna infect them, then call us and we'll meet you outside.
Yeah, we, I mean, we could shut the bathrooms down. That's an idea if you don't feel.
I mean, that's, that's not, that's not a fee.
Well, you're having a fear that we're not doing what we're trying to do.
I mean, you're gonna shut the town hall down or gonna meet people outside. All I'm saying was, there's a certain way you're supposed to clean when it comes to this. It is guidelines set by the CDC, not Dennis Long. And has this person been trained and has it cleaning it according to the CDC?
Nobody here has been trained to clean, so.
Yes, there is.
Michelle and I have sat through all those CDCs and we are, we have a God.
Yes, there is.
The people that are coming in here to rent this out are not trained to clean.
No, I appreciate that. But you say nothing's been said. Well, this is the first meeting we've had in six months.
Right.
You could say something.
So the first thing, hold on, the, I mean, the, the bathroom is definitely, and we're, we're not, I'm certainly not trying to, we, we need to have a, because it's the first meeting, we need to have a roundtable discussion on how they wanna handle the, the bathroom.
Right, yeah.
Is probably the one area that's not being sanitized per the CDC guideline.
That's the easiest problem to solve. Just don't let them use the bathroom.
Yeah. On a daily basis, but if someone's, if someone's renting the hall, you know, or using the hall, they're gonna need a bathroom.
Right.
Well, and then you.
I'd say we just put a fee on for cleaning.
That's what I was thinking.
Very simple. Fifty bucks for cleaning.
So that we can pay somebody that knows how to do it the right way.
Someone to clean after each event.
Yeah.
So you already have a fifty dollar deposit and you have a fifty dollar fee that you charge now. I mean, you could use that, you know, during COVID to, so that they're not more, you could increase the amount to a hundred.
You gotta, you also gotta make sure that whoever's doing the cleaning, like we have this cleaning lady, that, um, I forget her name, she can fit that in her schedule because that has to be done exactly the day after that morning. So, I mean, I.
You know, and I mean, I know you've already made two commitments in September. Maybe, you know, it's in the best interest of the taxpayers, that people are coming in and out not to rent the hall out after these two. You know, let these two go through that you approved and just, I mean, less is best, you know what I mean, as far as people coming in. Maybe we shouldn't be allowing them to, to use the hall right now.
How about our meetings?
Well, the meetings would be different because those are town meetings and we could bring a cleaning company in for any person in, you know, based on the meeting schedule, but.
That, that has been trained.
That has been trained, yeah. It's a, I mean, it's a, it's a checklist that Michelle and I have gone through, we've gone through with Cheryl, who does our cleaning. She's well aware of, of the chemicals and what needs to be used.
Okay.
And the space, in the areas that she's doing. I'm sure she'd love to tell you everything she does.
And I'm sure it's gonna cost more money, but, you know, it, it's really not fair to ask people that are volunteering a lot of time for the town already to, uh, clean the place before they leave or wipe stuff down.
And that's my fault. That's probably me. I did say, here's the wipers if you don't mind wiping down your.
No, Jen, it's not, it's not a criticism. It's just a.
Well, we've only had one committee and I sent one email, so.
But they may wanna wipe it down before they sit down, Tom.
Right, and that's what we do in shop.
Yeah, that's more, more the idea why it's there.
No.
I wash my carriage down even though they've already washed it.
And everybody, like last night, I mean, at the meeting, I mean, the meeting was over and everybody left.
Yep.
You know, I mean, it's, it, even if you got good intentions, it doesn't always work out that way and.
First thing I thought of this morning.
I just, obviously it was an issue or you wouldn't have addressed it.
Right.
Right.
I thought it might be an issue.
Right.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
So what, before someone else comes up, what do you want to do, I mean, differently? Do you want to consider not, you know, other than town required meetings, you know, you know, less is best as far as bringing people in? You know, you've got the one, one event scheduled and you've got the DEP class. I mean, you know, I say we shut it down. I just.
I mean, classes are, you know, classes are something we should be doing anyway, so.
I don't think we should shut those down.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, and, and I will tell you with that one, since we're on the conversation of it, um, when I originally came to you and asked you for, asked you for him to, to be able to use the hall, I specifically asked him where the people were coming from that were attending the class. And he gave me the states and I made sure that they were in conjunction with the, the states that are allowed to come into Maine without quarantining. I was very surprised the next day when I told him it was okay to use it, that he attached, um, an application form and asked me to advertise it. So I replied again. I said, so this means we have openings? I just asked you where everybody was coming from, you know what I mean? Because I wouldn't have run and bought you if they were coming from states that we're supposed to quarantine. So I'm not sure the class is full after all, um.
When is the class?
Class, I'm gonna say is the fifteenth, sixteenth. It's on a Tuesday or Tuesday, Wednesday. I've got the date in my, um.
Cause I wanted to go to it. I just.
Yeah, I can look at it. I feel like it's the sixteenth, no, fifteenth.
Fifteenth, all right.
It's, um, and then you have the one event on the, on the sixth. And the sixth event, um, I mean, Cheryl actually does the cleaning on Monday, so that it would be cleaned anyways. We'll ask her to spend a little more time, um, on the hall. And then, I mean, you know, have her clean throughout the meetings certainly. I mean, these are a good point. They probably weren't washed from last night. I, you know, I, I was under the impression that they are being washed, but probably not after every meeting. So that's a conversation we can have.
They should be, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, I'm gonna sit here leaning up against it. He's, it's got a point. I mean, unlike the curtains, you washed those what, a month ago, week ago? I mean, how often are we supposed to be taking those down?
Schools, the schools taken out all soft services.
What have they done?
They've taken, so you can't, nothing you can touch like that. So the camera, so these would be gone.
Right. Well, we could do that. Then at least we can wipe the tables down. For now.
I mean, you can take the cloths out. I mean, they're designed for, you know.
I know, but.
But just.
Just for now.
Wear jeans.
I'll wear my jeans. No dresses.
No, it's not, I mean, they're, they're great, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, we've done a lot. David's right. We've done a lot. I mean, we're never, are we ever gonna do everything? But for certain, you know.
Do you wanna make sure?
So how do you wanna handle the bathrooms? Because right now they are.
Can we have somebody clean them daily?
Huh?
Can we have somebody clean them daily?
Shut them down to the public?
I mean, that's, you know, the cleaning is a completely differently hourly rate and, you know, they certainly can't double dip and do it during regular time. I mean, we're gonna have to have, you know.
It's a hard job.
What's that?
No, but.
It's about the town administrator's job to clean the bathroom.
No, I didn't mean her. I just meant find somebody to come in.
You meant staff, right, staff.
Well, not even staff, just, you know.
So you want them cleaned every day or after every use?
Can't do after every use. There's no way, you know? I just thought daily, the end of the day, you know?
Let me, uh, let me put some thought into it. How much, you know, if it takes fifteen minutes to, to wash the restroom, you know, you're gonna find somebody that wants to clean for fifteen minutes? Are you willing to round it up to an hour to make it worth that?
It's gonna have to be an hour. You're not gonna pay somebody fifteen minutes.
Could you use that person to do the meetings though, too?
After the meetings?
You know, after the meetings, so that, I don't know.
Yeah, let me, give, let me give us some thought.
Just kinda think about it. We'll talk about it.
Problem, we'll go back to Zoom meetings.
We'll figure it out.
All right. At this point, the, the point that was brought up is, at the end of the day, there's no way we're gonna be able to do our job at a hundred percent. Because there's gonna be people coming in and out of here. I mean, you can't have a person cleaning 24/7.
I mean, even with the Zoom meetings, right, with bathrooms open.
What's that?
I said, even with the Zoom meetings, it's the customers during the day.
This right here, okay, after we leave you, we should have somebody clean this right after.
Right, that's what I'm saying, after us, yeah, somebody should.
And, um, there's not gonna be a cleaning person waiting at that door for us to leave.
No.
And, um, if it's, if it's gonna be such an issue, then we may have to go back to where we're doing it. But I look at things a little different than everybody else does, so I'm, I'm.
Well, that's what I was saying. I mean, what we did across the board was just ask everybody to pitch in and take a wiping and wipe down their areas and stuff. And then somebody goes in afterwards and lysols everything.
You should have a bottle of anti-stuff like a lot of places do at the door so they can squirt their hands. So I go into restaurants in New Hampshire, I have to go in, you squirt your hand, wipe down, then they let you in. Um, you start with something like that, um, but.
Might be a good idea to have a bottle out there, have masks out there. Just, you know, clean mask for everybody and wash your hands. I'm just, it's a start.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other public comments?
Good evening. May I hand these or would you prefer I not hand these out to you?
It's fine.
Is it okay?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me a couple of moments. My name is Mike Pardue and I'm running for District 34. I'm the Republican Senate candidate to represent your town. And so I just wanted to take a couple of moments to introduce myself. Um, I hope to be at a number of your meetings to hear some of the proceedings that you have and the areas of interest, um, that are going on in, in Acton. Uh, my background is about forty years between municipal and corporate experience, most of it in the municipal sector. I currently serve as the town manager in Kennybunk. Um, so I fully appreciate the challenges you're faced with in your previous discussion. Um, my goal is to be your eyes, ears and voice in Augusta. And I feel my background will certainly serve to represent you well, to better understand what your needs are so that I can speak on your, um, in Augusta. And, uh, so it's important to me that I hear from you. Um, I'd love to connect with Jennifer at times to hear what concerns you may have representing the community, um, and certainly with the board so that I can, can carry that message forward and protect your interests and represent those in Augusta. My previous life, I've served as a police chief, um, up in the city of Westbrook, Maine, uh, the fire chief in Westbrook as well. And I've been a town manager in a gunquit and a town administrator in New Hampshire for a number of years. So I, I have some, some good background, So, I, I have some, some good background, I think, in municipal government, and my hope is to represent you well, and I would hope and ask for your support in those that are viewing tonight, to be able to represent you. Open any questions, but, uh, don't want to take much of your time either. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Couple of questions. Um, I don't know, two, three, four weeks ago, uh, y'all had a discussion about, uh, town employees and time off, uh, such as the day after Thanksgiving. Do you remember that discussion?
No.
You don't?
I said yes.
Okay. And what was, what was the consensus?
We've gone back and forth for a couple of years with, with it, and we decided not to pay for that.
Uh, that's a violation of the town's personnel policy, just to make you aware of that. If you close the town hall the day after Thanksgiving and it is her normal workday, she's entitled to be paid for it by the personnel policy.
If she has hours accumulated?
It's right in the town po, right in the town policy, okay?
But I thought it was due to if they had-
No, it's, it's, if it's closed beyond her control-
Mm-hmm.
You know, a snowstorm, whatever, uh, she's entitled to get paid, just like if we have a big snowstorm and the dump is closed on a Monday. Those guys are all entitled to be paid because they were all scheduled to work. That's according to personnel policy.
Now, is that in the event of an emergency we close down?
Doesn't say emergency.
Okay.
Says circumstances beyond the individual's control. You can look it up, I just want to bring it to your attention, that's all. Uh, my other thing that I want to bring up to you is milk coming out of the town hall is a violation of the town's personnel policy.
Yep.
It needs to stop, if it hasn't already.
I believe it has.
If it has, great, then it's a moot point.
Yep, it's already been taken care of.
Okay?
Thank you.
That's all, thank you.
I guess I'll interject there, it's already been taken care of is news to me. We had that conversation?
We did talk about it a couple of weeks ago.
You told me a few weeks ago that Mr. Long complained and, but the three of you have never spoken to me, so.
No, no, we haven't spoken to you, I thought you had said-
Well, for you to say it's already been taken care of, I guess I'm confused and I'm not misleading.
I meant when you talked about it, and that's what I meant.
Yeah, so.
I, I personally don't see an issue with it.
I-
If someone wants to come in here and pick a gallon of milk up because you happen to own a dairy and it's convenient for someone?
But in our personnel policy, what is that?
Personnel policy, chapter five-
Yeah.
Section C.
Whatever.
That's the issue. We have something in place.
You guys broke the policy.
No, no, right, and that's, yep.
All three of you have a resigned policy.
Let's pull it up and see if I can-
If you want to speak, you can come up here, Roland, you know, the routine.
Yeah.
Um, I, I heard about this issue that, um, I think Mr. Long and Mr. Waterhouse brought up, and honestly, I didn't think it was a big deal. Um, I guess you would look into, you want to look back at personnel policy, we had two town employees that come in and grab it at will, doesn't, doesn't affect the, uh, the job of our town administrator when they come in and just grab it out of the cooler and leave. So, I didn't think it was a big deal. Um, if you, if you like this to make it a big deal, guys, we, we can, I guess, but, um, myself, I'm-
So it does say, no employee shall engage in any business other than the regular assigned duties during work hours.
Thank you.
Right.
You're welcome, Roland.
I guess if you feel good about yourself, that's, that's great, um, but, I mean, really, nobody had ever complained about it.
And, and I, and I-
And we'll make sure that we address the issue.
And I guess for, for clarity, since we are on camera, I want to, I want to make it clear that never have I advertised my son's dairy at the window, never have I asked anybody at the window if they wanted to buy my son's dairy, who has worked since high school to build this from the ground up. I have two residents, two residents, that buy milk regularly, and I bring it in on Thursdays, it sits in that refrigerator, they grab it and they leave. Call it my designated lunch break that I haven't taken in fifteen years, call it a break. My, our milk is in fifteen, in ten stores right now. Um, I, you know, to the town of Acton residents that, that are watching this, never have I taken advantage in any way of this town, and the mere fact that now, after all of the allegations that have been made, two members of, of committees, I'm just, so I apologize to the town of Acton if I have overstepped by letting two employees get milk, um, one of them, I, I've never, I don't think I've spoken to her in weeks, and she just picks it up and goes, but it is a clear violation, and, uh, Roland, I do appreciate you pointing that out after all this time. Um, I am sorry that, that you and Mr. Long feel like, um, I don't give enough to the town and that has to be a, a big deal at this point. Uh, you might as well, Roland, but thank you.
All I see is, uh, Roland, back along, you said you'd be back to stir the pot.
Yeah.
Apparently you are, so.
And this all sums back to the executive session and hence-
Yeah.
What, what role does the town administrator have, because the week before that, with